We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your God, whose name extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, tonight's agenda, we have public input at 7:10. 7:15, we have police dispatcher interviews and appointments. 7:30, we have the permanent municipal building committee middle school generator update and the fire station update. 7:50, we have the medical reserve corp emergency dispensing site EBS drill. 8 o'clock, we have public hearing continuation for Acton Toyota amend the classroom license temporary parking at 222 Great Road. 8:15, we have the police chief secondhand valuable items bylaw implementation. 8:30, we've got the town administrator assistant town administrator for finance and budget. May 6, 2013 annual special town meeting order of articles. Harvard Road construction project staffing vacancy review for finance. 8:45, we have other business consent agenda minutes per hour. And then at 8:50, we'll be going into an executive session litigation strategy. Okay, let's start with the mail.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, just a few things. One is a notice from National Grid announcing some annual work that they'll be doing in selective side pruning or removal of trees along the transmission, electric transmission right away to Littleton. And it's a notice we get every year, and they're announcing the work will be done sometime between April 1st of this year and March 31st of next year. So they're giving themselves plenty of time.
How many years ago?
So, next item we have is a copy of a petition that was filed with the town clerk with the requisite number of signatures for ballot question to be placed on the 11th annual town election ballot. And the question proposes to expand the Community Preservation Act surcharge, which right now only covers residential property, but also include commercial and industrial property with the first $100,000 of value exempted. So that will appear on the ballot, and we are allowed to produce information. We're not allowed to influence the outcome of a ballot question, but we are allowed to provide information about what the impacts would be, and we do have that information available, and we can make it available generally.
Talk about that just briefly, what the impact might be or ballpark number?
It's about, I'm trying to think.
I think it's $68,000 approximately.
Approximately, and we do have some estimates of what the impact would be on typical property taxpayers in that class as well, and we can make that available. The assessor has, Chief Assessor's prepared an information brief on that that we can share. Last item in the packet is the Fire Chief's announcement of the appointment of promotion, rather, of one of our firefighters to the position of firefighter, emergency medical service coordinator. And I see the chief here, and I see our promotee here as well.
I'm Glancy. I've been promoted to EMS coordinator for the department, being charged with all of our EMS services, providing upkeep on the ambulances, maintaining, keeping them up to record with OEMS, as well as keeping track of all the records for the department members, all that certifications, CPR, stuff like that.
Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations.
All right, we're on to the police dispatcher interviews.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd mind, we want to talk to the chief.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed public input. Sorry, I apologize. I'm having a rough night tonight, my head's kind of stuffed up so I'm really off. Thanks for correcting me. Public input, in the audience, board members.
I have a couple things if I might.
Sure.
I was speaking with a resident a few weeks ago, and they mentioned it might be helpful to have the agenda posted somewhere in the room that could be, you know, up on the wall and somehow updated with, you know, where we are in the agenda, so when people walk in, they have an idea of where we are. I don't know if there's something that can be put up on a PowerPoint somehow. I know technology probably, I'm just wondering if there's use or if anybody has any experience with it.
Yeah, I know we're doing the low-tech solution tonight. There's a pile of printed copies of the agenda on the table as they enter. I'd have to think about how, from a technological standpoint, how we...
Yeah, I wouldn't want the projector.
Well, that's the thing, if you want to put it back here so everyone can see it, or you don't, you know, I don't know.
We'll consult with our very well-equipped LCTV studio and see if we can't come up with a technical solution to that. I know they have our agenda electronically, and, you know, maybe they could scroll it on the bottom of the screen, and we could look at it in the back of the room.
Yeah, actually, it wouldn't be bad, yeah. On the side.
Oh, thank you. Such as?
Oh, there you go.
Can you highlight which one we're on now? Okay.
No, all right, we'll work on that.
Yeah, so just up against, maybe...
Beginning was very close.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me continue. You know, something came out today, and there's just no way to beat around the bush. I thought about ways to bring this up, but there's really only one way to bring it up. And we received an email today, and we see an update from, what's the office? This Massachusetts Division of Campaign Finance, something, saying that local business, Donalins, was, has agreed to pay a $25,000 fine for campaign finance infractions. And it was that they made contributions, excessive contributions, and contributions through intermediaries to selectmen candidates. I want to make sure that everybody knows that this is not pertinent to this election, that it's not anything to do with the candidates who are up this year, it's up for previous candidates, previous elections, which were 2009, 2010, and 2012, I believe. And I don't think it would be really something for us to discuss if weren't for, that there was a sitting selectman on here, and that was involved in this, at least the recipient of them. And I'm wondering if we want to schedule agenda time, if we want to refer to Tom Harrington to find out what we can talk about. But I think the selectmen and the town is, deserves an explanation. Donalins had some violations, and they paid a fine, and then the recipients also paid a fee to the state, and I think we are, we deserve answers as to why that was done. And I know it would be a significant time, so do we want to suggest an agenda item, or do we want to, you know, if we're at the Town Council, find out what we can and can't discuss, or anything like that?
I would think it would be best to talk to Town Council first before we have the discussion.
I would like to return to speak to that. There is a report, Office of Campaign Finance issued a letter or two myself and the other candidate, and to the, to the Donalins. That's online, that's available. If anybody wants a copy of it, I'll be happy to give that to them. I have no problem with sharing everything that's there. And I'm not sure I understand why you think it's a selectmen's item, because the highest authority in Massachusetts that does investigations did their investigation and was very definitive in their findings. And I don't think anybody has a problem with those findings. So I think the first thing, maybe you should read the whole thing. And like I said, I'm happy to talk with anybody about it, I'm just not sure it's a selectmen's business.
Well, I think it is, because it's in the interest of open government, it's a seating selectman who paid a fee, as well as Donalins. And for some reason, Donalins made, Donalins did something wrong, they paid a fee, and then somebody else paid a fee, so is that something that we should have answers to? And I think we should. I think, you know, even if there is a higher authority in the state, I don't think there's anyone higher than the townspeople, the people who elect us. So I think that in, out of respect for them, that we should hear a little more about this. And like I said, I think it'll be a long discussion, and we should probably devote agenda time, rather than just trying to squeeze it in on public input.
Well, the way the board of selectmen handles that logistically is that they have powers to conduct an investigation, so I suggest you make a motion.
Well, I want to hear from Town Council to find out if we, find out exactly what they are, because this, it's new to me that we can conduct an investigation, but I think it's worthwhile to hear from Town Council to find out what the options are. But it's just an, it's an ugly matter, and I think that...
Did you read the report?
A couple of times.
Okay.
But, I, you know, again, I don't want to get in a back and forth, I don't know if there's any limitations that we can talk about.
Well, I'm free to talk about it, I don't have to hide behind Town Council to talk about it. You've got something to say, you say it.
Okay. Why did you pay $500 back after this investigation? Why did you pay a $500 fine?
If you read the report, you would see why that is.
No, it doesn't. It says...
It does say that.
Okay, then why should...
It's very clear that it says that.
Then in the interest of open and transparent government, would you please explain it to the town, why you paid a $500 fine?
Okay.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to read the report, I want to hear from you, Alex.
So you don't want to hear from the people who govern the law?
No, I want to hear from Alex McCurdy, the person who paid the fine, why you paid the fine. That's what I want to hear, not a report. I read the report. That's what I asked. And you said you're willing to discuss any of it.
I am willing to discuss.
And if you're willing, you know, if you want to wait, we'll put it, we can put it off.
I don't, it doesn't matter whether I wait or not. The report is the report, it has its findings. I will tell you what the report says, because there's where the findings are. They are created by an agency that does not have political biases, does not have an ax to grind, does not have anything else. It was a very thorough investigation, I know that. I was in it for months, and I was asked to stay silent about it. I would have gladly disclosed that it was going on, but there was more than one party involved, and they asked for it to remain quiet. It's very simple. I was assessed a $500 fine because I did not have a sufficient system. Back up a step. The law states that a campaign must not accept illegal donations. The fact of the matter is, our campaign did. We didn't know it, but we did. But in this particular case, ignorance does not get you off the hook. So because we did not have a system and find out that the money was transferred in that manner, then to close the matter out, they simply said to me, you have to have a system, and we're going to assess you a fine. And I agreed. I should have caught it. I didn't catch it, and that's all in the report. And it's as simple as that. You know, if you want to make a big deal of it, knock yourself out.
Well, I think it is a big deal, and I appreciate your honest explanation. I just think there might be more to it. I mean, my campaign was probably funded on $2,000, and my biggest donation was...
You want to practice being the sheriff of Nottingham and decide that this agency doesn't know what they're talking about?
No, I want to make sure we get to the bottom of this, and I want to find out if there were any violations of the ethics, code of ethics and conduct that we have. And that's why I'd like to refer to Town Council and possibly schedule...
So you're adding something to it?
Sorry?
You're adding something to it? You're not claiming an ethics violation?
I want to see if there is, I don't know if there is. Sounds like it could be.
And you're, you know, whatever you want to do, knock yourself out. I'm ready for it, I will talk to the public about it. You're right, I do owe the public an explanation, but I don't think I have to put up with this. And, like I said, to anybody that's out there, if you want to talk to me about it, you can talk to me about it. If you want a copy of the report, I'll email you a copy of the report. I have nothing that I really particularly want to hide, I have nothing to hide, and it's that simple. So if you think there's violations, whatever, if there's violations, then knock yourself out.
I want to know, I just want to know. So Keith, is it something we can get from Town Council, if there's anything else that was, or are we going, are we barking up the tree of double jeopardy here? If you can find out from him.
What I understood when it was first raised, that you were looking for direction from Town Council on what requirements or limitations might be put on the Board of Selectmen in discussing that report. So I can...
Well, it seems like...
If you're, if the goal is to discuss that report, which has been issued by another agency, we can ask Town Council what the parameters are on your discussions. If you want to do something more than that, I think I would need further direction on what you're...
Well, to see if there's any, if there was a violation of the ethic, code of ethics and conduct, is that something that we need to look at ourselves? And Alex said there's some sort of investigation that we might be able to conduct, and I don't know if I'm familiar with that, so those are the kind of things.
Well, if, the request to Town Council then could include any parameters on what the Board of Selectmen is allowed to do in conducting an investigation.
I think we need some clear guidance here. If that's the, I think one thing Mr. Dussett needs to do.
I still don't see...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Whatever comes with it, we'll go through it.
Tom Coughlin, Coughlin Road.
Tom Coughlin, Coughlin Road. I have the report in front of me, and I don't even know why we're talking about this, it's a done deal. The Office of Campaign and Political Finance have already assessed the fine, and as far as I'm concerned, it's over. Mr. McCurdy has paid the fine, Rich Carter's paying the fine, Donalins is paying the fine. And Donalins is a, is a good neighbor for this town. I mean, the local, the local church that I belong to, they do a lot of benefits down there. And also, when my kids were small, the Brownies were selling cookies, they're in front of Donalins, and they're just a terrific neighbor. But as far as I'm concerned, it's a done deal, it's over. It's right here in the report. I don't even know why we're talking about it.
Well, we did start talking about it, I didn't know that Mr. McCurdy was going to be so forthcoming tonight, and I didn't, and so that's why I wanted to just find out if we wanted to put it in the agenda item. And, but I still think that we still should see if there's anything else that we need to do from Town Council. And, you know, that's where we're at right now.
We are calling Newtown Road. I'd like to say that I think all of us know that on the national level, people with huge amounts of money can put all the money they want towards any candidate they want, and they are no question. I find it really sad that a vendetta that has been conducted for quite some time against Alex McCurdy has ended up with good citizens who support the town in every way, Alex McCurdy, Rich Carter, and Donalins is being dragged into something because small people with small amounts of money are found. It is perhaps difficult often, when you're running a campaign, to know everybody who has given you money. And you see a name, and somebody has contributed, you think, oh, that's nice, I don't know that person, but they're a friend of a friend. So this can happen. And I think the reason that these people have been fingered, pointed at, and perhaps the reason that Mr. Dussett is pointing, is a continuing, ongoing vendetta against Mr. McCurdy for reasons that have very little to do with the good of the town. Thanks.
All right, I think, I think we've got enough at this point.
That's it? So no more public comment?
Not on this.
This is a great and important subject.
Why not? Mr. Chairman, we, from the other side, the hypocrisy here is...
We're going to go through this and then start first.
That's fine, the hypocrisy here is incredible. I think it's fair to say...
Mr. Glady, let me go to Chris first, because he had his hand raised before you, then on to you. Go ahead, Chris.
I think he's going to like my comments a lot. So, for one, I mean, I, I'm no expert on these subjects, but I too read the report. It certainly seems, as these comments have indicated, that there's far less culpability here than the inference and positioning would suggest. It feels to me, like just a regular citizen, that this is more like a political puppet master show that we've just experienced. And that's unfortunate. But while we're on the subject of the code of ethics that you raised, Mr. Dussett, something has been bothering me, there's been so much going on the last few months, we haven't been able to cover it. And that is something that came up on December 17th at the selectmen meeting, when you recused yourself during a conversation about the public works and the potential town engineer and a job that you're interested in, which is perfectly appropriate. However, your position on other issues that come before this committee and on the SOR committee, given the logical connection, is very problematic. There's a reasonably foreseeable financial interest in the confluence of those issues, and I just wondered how you square that.
If you could give it to me in more detail, I don't follow you, so...
Well, on December 17th, I'll spell it out. On December 17th, at the selectmen meeting, you recused yourself...
Right.
Because a discussion came up about the potential of a commission being created or a further public works department or town engineer, more infrastructure being required. Your words were, and of course it was recorded, as you know, these sessions are, you're interested in the position.
No, they...
And how is it that you recused yourself, which was the right thing to do, so please, I'm not inferring anything in that, but you recused yourself from that for a reason? How is it that you can now be involved in issues regarding infrastructure, public work, SOR, when those things may become part of that department and position you expressed interest in?
Okay. I recuse myself because I said I may be interested in the position if it comes about. I believe the way that I can deal with these things right now is because there is no department, there is no town engineer, there is no position available, there is no sewer commission, there is no sewer project. And as far as my stance on the sewer project, it has been all along consistent with everything that goes along with the sewer committee, is that I want to get the information out there. I don't care how anybody votes for it, I haven't decided how I'm going to vote for it. Well, I guess probably I have to say I'm going to vote for it, that's it. But all I want to do is get the information out there so that people can make an educated decision. I have, if it goes, it goes, if it doesn't go, then, you know, it doesn't go. And as far as there being, you know, a conflict of interest, because there may be a sewer commission, there may be a town engineer position, there may be a structure, and there may be infrastructure bill, and you say there's large financial gains. And I'm sorry, I don't know if you've looked lately, but town engineers don't make much money, there's no large financial gain. The town engineer does not build the project and get paid for building it. So there's no large financial gain and there's no conflict of interest when there's no sewer commission and there's no, no town engineer position.
Read the, read the law. It's reasonably foreseeable financial interest.
What's the financial interest in it?
Any compensation for that position whatsoever, even a dollar.
Okay, so what's, so what does a town engineer currently pay?
You, you are, that is absolutely irrelevant.
Exactly.
If it's more than 50 cents, you may be in violation, and you need to walk back through, you need to walk back to the exposure period.
I'll tell you what, I will contact, Mrs. Smoke, to make you happy, I will contact the, I will contact the, the commission, and see if there's any issue with me being on the sewer commission.
On the point of neutrality on the issue, though, I'm clearly not in favor of SOR. You raised the SOR issue. Everything you've put into the independent, every article, every comment has been pro SOR. Just, just say it, you're pro SOR, you have every right to be. Stop saying it's neutral, or that the work of your committee is. It isn't. And you don't have to be. You take a position, you're a voter, just as I have. I'm no so for the reasons I have, and as the reasons I've stated.
This is a great tactic of deflecting the attention away from what we're really talking about.
I'm not flunking anything. You brought up, you brought up, you brought up the code of ethics.
And you've gone way outside of what we were talking about to come after me, and there's nothing there. But I will contact it.
I recognize opposition facts in the truth can be inconvenient, like I said, but be prepared for more of it.
That's fine, I am prepared. Because I don't see anything.
Yeah, well, apparently you don't.
I'm trying to stay professional, too, and, you know, your slight comments are not keeping that...
Thank you for, thank you for having me.
Come here, Mr. Glady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I won't belabor this, in the hopes that you will indeed schedule needed time on this. This board has on numerous occasions discussed openness, transparency, and ethics. And in this instance, the report is what it is, but what it is not is the final word on the subject. The OCPF has a limited legal purview specific to campaign finance laws. The activities discussed in the report certainly extend beyond that. And the facts that are presented here, at least the positions of the folks that were cited and fined in this report, are that we're expected as citizens to believe that a local business went to great lengths to contribute illegally $8,000 in local races, and two candidates received that money and somehow didn't know it was coming from that entity? All of us have run in races, the four of you anyway, myself, number of people in the audience. I find it hard to believe that anybody can be receiving multiple $500 checks and not who they, not know who they're coming from, or at least be curious as to why they're coming to them. And I think that's probably at the root, selectmen Dussett, of what maybe you're pursuing. I hope so in any event. Thank you.
Board members, anything else? Okay, let's move on to police dispatcher interviews. Now, sorry, 25 minutes later.
You wanted an introduction?
I want the introduction first.
Okay, and the reason for the introduction is that the Board of Selectmen had voted back on February 8th to approve the filling of one, we'll call it dispatcher communications officer vacancy. Since then, we've had another vacancy arise. There was a sufficient pool of candidates to be able to bring multiple appointments forward now. So you're going to be asked to do two things. One is to amend your prior vote, which recognized one vacancy and it said have two. And then towards that, since one of the, the position I think is, becomes vacant three days from now, so that we wanted to not, you know, further exacerbate the staffing shortage in the department. So what you have is two candidates to be filled on the condition that you first recognize two vacancies rather than one.
Thank you, I appreciate it. With that said, on the staff vacancy, basically the same explanation as last time, it's revenue neutral. The position was already budgeted for, both with insurance, and it's in the budget, so it's a revenue, revenue neutral filling of that position. And that's the reason we asked to go forward, and where, you know, obviously with the town meeting crunch, it was tough to get into a meeting, so we did make a decision to try and bring it all today in one big package. Can you briefly just walk us through the highlights of the interview process? Sure, can. First of all, we, we did a resume, we advertised the position for over, it was almost for four weeks. Looked at all the resumes, the only people we interviewed in this, during this process were people that had prior communications time on the desk, whether it be police, fire, just police, the candidates we selected, both have police-fire experience. The interviews were conducted by Chief Scott Wazinski, Deputy Chief Steve McCurdy from the Fire Department, Chief Kelly from the Police Department, myself, and Sergeant Jeff Patterson, who was interim, you know, the interim supervisory role in the dispatch center in the transitional period, with Supervisor Bemis leaving at the end of May. So we did those interviews, these two gentlemen were selected out of the pool of candidates. Both candidates expressed one of the things that I think, besides their experience, one full-time for a long period of time, one part-time over the town at Acton, doing both, both of them doing both police and fire, being close enough to know, to know some of our systems already. They both excelled in customer service, and that's something, obviously, that is important to us. He's the dispatch personnel, the communications officer, maybe the only person that anybody ever talks to when they're dealing with, you know, Littleton Public Safety, both police, fire, maybe the only interaction, and it certainly is the initial interaction. So first is Andrew Perry from the town of Harvard. He's well-known throughout the, throughout the area, been on Harvard there since January 2005, he's a firefighter, paramedic, and just has an impeccable, impeccable record. I know, I know Selectman McCurdy knows him quite well from his time over in Harvard, and I know, getting Chief McCurdy's happy that we're hiring another Brownfield graduate. So, for that, because I'd like to introduce Andrew Perry first, he's our first candidate.
Andrew. Thank you. Andrew, you're under the gun from over here.
Yeah, I'm under the gun, so tell us a little bit about your side, we've got a nice introduction.
I've been nerve-wracking, TV and cameras and everything. Like Deputy Chief King said, my name's Andrew Perry, I live and grew up in the town of Harvard, but I'm a graduate, as he started. Don't hold that against me, please. I've been working for Harvard Communications since January 2005, started out part-time, just had to go full-time in 2006, that's a good seven years now. I do work as a firefighter, paramedic on the side, and as a... I do work as a firefighter, paramedic on the side, and as a cop firefighter in Harvard. I've had the opportunity to work with some of the emergency services here in Littleton throughout my career, and I've really enjoyed those interactions. I've always felt Littleton's a great professional organization on both ends, all ends, that I've ever seen. And I've had some friends in Littleton, and I've always felt it's a great community, and I look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to work here.
Why Littleton over leaving Harvard?
Well, unfortunately, I was going to be leaving Harvard no matter what. Harvard is regionalizing their dispatch services with a couple other communities. And I felt it was a better opportunity for me personally to venture out to a neighboring community instead of working for that consortium. And so Littleton came up, and like I said, I've always enjoyed my professional interactions with Littleton, and thought it would be a great opportunity for me.
Just as a quick side note, Andrew also turned down the regional position to come to Littleton. He was offered the same, the regional position, almost the same time, and turned that down to come to us.
Get your face crossed, then.
Board members, any questions?
I just have one thing, Andrew. I noticed a number of places on here, it says, "be used at," and it says, "present, present, present, present." How do you know they fit all the same?
That's a, that's a great question. That's something both the Deputy Chief and I have talked about, and actually came up in the interview. Since that resume and since applying, I've reduced those number, or at least one of those commitments with the Air Fire Department. I professionally decided was, I wasn't able to give them what they deserved and decided to step back from there. Some of the other, you know, the other ones are volunteer, and in my spare time, won't conflict with any work hours, and don't have a lot of required commitments from me, so I just participate in my phone availability. So again, nothing will obviously ever conflict with working here. My full-time job will be my top priority. Thank you.
No, I mean, it seems very, very well-spoken and a good guy, and, you know, here, this is the way I stand on all these things. It's almost a full-on, I just think that they've been through the wringer, both Mr. Perry and Mr. Harold have been through the process, and they've been brought to us for a candidate, so there's really, you know, nothing else that I can delve into, the professionals have it here already, so I really don't have anything else.
I've known you for quite a while, and I'm really impressed by your interview.
Thank you.
I just wanted you to know that.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Second candidate, Phil Harold from Maynor, Mass. Well, Mr. Harold has less experience than Mr. Perry. He does work for the town of, town of acting, part-time, on the desk. He also attended the State Police Academy, which is the nine-one-one training academy, so that, again, you know, shows through his experience, as long as relatively new. We are fully confident, again, he stood out with his comments about, you know, public safety and about, you know, both firefighter and officer safety, and also just the interaction he has during his background check and things like that, that the interaction he has with the public. He's one that, you know, goes the extra mile to make people at ease at the front desk or on the phone, and really, you know, emulates, I think, what Littleton, what Littleton wants. So while his experience certainly isn't as great as Mr. Perry's, I have a full confidence in that his training is great, and I've had the chance, since he's applied, to listen to him a few times on Saturday nights on his dispatch on the desk and things like that. So with that, Mr. Harold.
Tell us a little bit.
I was raised in Maynor, familiar with Littleton to an extent. I've worked in acting for the past year, really enjoyed it. I spent most of my life in manufacturing, and I went through a couple of recessions and buyouts, and I kind of got old. At my age, you know, starting over again is, you know, looking at it this time, I kind of wanted to do something that I could do for a long time. And my children are grown, so I got into this about a year, a little over a year ago. I really enjoyed it. I was kind of looking to get into acting full-time. People are young there, could be a very long time. So position opened up in Littleton. After speaking with a couple of the officers in acting that are familiar with Littleton, they expressed to me that Littleton was a great organization to work for. A couple, actually, one of them worked here in the past, and he said it's a real family atmosphere, and a great place to work, so.
So that's, so the reason why you are coming to Littleton is because at this point there's nothing available?
Well, initially, that's why I came. If something would have opened up in acting, I certainly would have gone for it. At this point, I think that was one of the concerns when I had the interview, would you stay in acting and, you know, would I, would I shift that way if something came available? Absolutely not. I'm looking to get in somewhere and stay, and just stay.
You were working two jobs before, this will be down to one, are you, are you still going to work the case?
No, 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 I would give my two weeks notice with case, and I might still stay in the rotation with acting, initially just for the extra money, you know? But obviously, Littleton would be my first priority.
Same thing.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, well, if we have no more discussion, I will look for, we have two motions. So I need the first motion, to change from one to two, and then the second motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to amend this vote of February eighth, two thousand and thirteen, increase from one to two, the number of full-time benefited dispatch and communication officers' positions to be filled.
Second. Okay, moving second. Are all those in favor? Aye. Nice to have it.
To move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Andrew Perry and William Harold to position a full-time communications officer in Littleton Police Department, in order to dictate seniority pending the successful completion of the required testing.
Moving second in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nice to have it. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Mox. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bergman.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Dave. PMDC.
How are you doing tonight? Doing all right? You? The client's all.
Oh, how you been?
I intend only to take five minutes.
Oh, yeah. You're not the problem.
That's an awful big book there for five minutes.
Just to show you.
You're not the problem, it's the other guy toward behind you. No, behind you.
I'm here to report on the generator at the middle school.
Okay.
Okay. We were asked to take a look at it, see whether we could add to it so it can be used for emergency shelter more than currently is. The first thing I did, or we did, was I asked the Chief of the Department to give me the requirements, since it's a safety office in town. And I got the requirements, and proceeded to look at the generator from that point. First thing we had to do, we went to Griffin Electric. Griffin Electric had wired up and did all the electrical work in the middle school, so they had all the specs, and we had them too, but they were familiar with it. And the first thing they had to do was to take a look at the panels and figure out what we had, and that's the report, all right? After we got that, we then took and started to see what we could do based on the requirements that were presented to us. And I think we passed out to you the results and the requirements, but I'll go through them quick. Generator has the capability for more items to be added, okay? So we're going to be doing the outlets in the cafeteria, hallway, kitchen, for a long-term sheltering. The main lobby will have the outlets put on it, the phones, the nurse's office, the additional nurse's office, also the handicap room is across the street and across the hallway, and also the art room. We've also requested to look at the first floor, if it's possible to have two or three classrooms put on it, if you have families that you wanted to put in there. The issue we had is that there are lights on, on, in the computer room, which is on the right side, the resource room, which is a foster hall, and also the science room. We didn't think that was, we wouldn't want people going to the science room, for example, in an emergency. So one of the things we'll look at after we do what we're going to do is, is it possible tapping off another panel that's down on the right-hand side of a car to be tapped off so we could put lights in those three, those classrooms, and also possibly hook up the heating fans, so you could heat the building, heat those rooms? We won't know that until after we start. Powerful Wi-Fi, as the school has already taken care of that, they said it'll be done very soon, so you'll have Wi-Fi down there. And his law and the priorities with the gym, it so happens that there was already a line from the generator line down there, so we were able to hook in some of the gym, too. Now, one of the issues we have is that we're not going, we have to shut the power down there, because in the process of putting this report together, we found out that the electrical, if you've ever been down the electrical room of the middle school, it takes up two rooms, many, many, many panels, and it needs updating and maintenance. So we're going to have that done. We'll shut the power down on the sixteenth of April, which is the vacation week. And they've already cleared, they're not in touch with the electric, with the light and water, with the maintenance man issue. I talked to the electrical inspector, and there was scheduled for one day shutdown only, they'll have like four or five people working to do maintenance on the panels, which we're dying eager having done. Then on the, that's on the sixteenth. On the fifteenth, we actually will start the changeover to hook in the generator, two additional panels that will feed off all the items I just mentioned to you. All the work will be complete. First off, the power will go back on that night. They only going to take one day because they'll have sufficient people there to work it. And then the rest of the work will be complete by the nineteenth, so the school can go back there on Monday morning. Okay? Now, while they're here, they're going to look at the electrical room that's down on the right-hand side of the building, on the field side of the building at the middle school, to see whether it's possible to tap into a couple lines, a couple items there to hook up powerful, the lighting in those classrooms and the fans and the heaters. Any questions?
Sounds like a very thorough report. Board members?
What was the budget going to be for that interview?
We put fifty thousand dollars aside for the generator, and we haven't spent that yet. And we've issued, and by the way, I want to make a comment that I want to thank Steve Mox, who's been a great help to us by issuing the POs for us best. But we are, we have about, let me see, about eighteen thousand dollars left out of the fifty. And we're not sure what's going to happen to the right-hand side of the building. If we can tap off the electrical room that's down there, it won't cost that much, but if we can't, we've got to run wires, we're going to run power from the main electrical room, and the cable that has to be used is fairly expensive, and it's going to run, they got to go up over the ceiling, which is very time-consuming. Needless to say, it's all, the amount of money we have to pay them is to, to the, what's the word I want? I'm forgetting the word now. We have to meet the minimum salary that the state says.
Pailing wage.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Pailing wage. Okay? So, but we still have eighteen thousand dollars.
Sticks in your throat.
Yeah.
So we think we're going to come in on budget with this, or what are you thinking?
We'll be okay.
We'll be okay.
Any questions?
Good with that one.
Next one is...
So it'll be offset for next winter's emergencies, and we need the shelter.
Next one is the feasibility study with the fire station. So, Greg, Mr. Greg.
Thank you.
I'd like to...
How my presentation is, unfortunately, a...
Manual? Yeah, manual, manual.
Manual?
As you open it, just, yeah, open it forward, all the way up to the top. Right about the top. It's kind of low-tech tonight. Is that correct? First, the Wednesday feasibility study, we're probably remembering him from the police station. Let me go through my notes now.
I apologize for not having boards or screens or whatever. I'm all through. Thanks, Joe. We wrapped up the beginning of the feasibility study, and this is, I'd like to give you an update snapshot of where we are and where we're going so far. It's still somewhat in progress, there's still some things that we're looking at. What I'd like basically to do is give you a quick overview of the process that we went through, and then, you know, explain to you some of the things we learned and some of the conclusions that we reached. The first part of the exercise was an existing building and site evaluation, which I think we, you were familiar with that as part of the strategy. There are, you know, the existing firehouse, fire station on the site, the old police building, and the apparatus garage that is in the back, and the site itself, we took a look at that. The next thing we did is we put a space program together, and this was really an itemized list, a catalog, if you will, of all the spaces and functions that the Fire Department needed. And it allowed us to kind of contrast and compare what those needs are versus what the facilities they currently have or provide. So we were able to identify the needs, identify and contrast what the most urgent needs are, as well as overall what the needs of the department are going to be moving into the future. Finally, we put together some schematic design that reflected those, those program, that program information, and from that, we were able to put together a schematic estimate. Now, the estimate we're going to show you tonight is one that we generated in our office. We hadn't gotten to this point with a design that kind of responds to the site, responds to the existing conditions, and responds to the needs. We've been able to kind of refine a design that would be the substance of a reliable estimate. That is to be forthcoming, we're working on that in the next few weeks to have a professional estimate done. So the one that we have in this report is not that yet. We feel it is, at the same time, conservative, we feel that it's pretty reliable numbers, numbers nevertheless, that we want to have, want to have somebody do it professionally. Existing building and site evaluation. The old police station building. Been a lot of discussion about the ability to reuse this building, to renovate the building. What we determined was that portions of the building that are really usable, that can be applied to a new renovation or a final building, are basically the roof, the wall, and the foundation structure. The rest of the building is virtually nonexistent. There are no mechanical systems, electrical systems, the envelope, siding, as the siding and roofing, the insulation, the windows, virtually all the other components of the building either need replacement or aren't there, or in such poor condition that they need to be, they need to be replaced. The conclusion is that about fifteen to twenty percent of the value of the ultimate renovation is what you already have. So you're basically saving fifteen to twenty percent off the cost of a new building by renovating. If you were to tear it down and build, you know, build new, you would probably spend well, within fifteen or twenty percent of what you could spend to fix it. At the same time, it's, the construction itself is a light-duty, commercial-type construction. It's a, you know, it's sound, but it's not, it's not a building that's really well-suited for heavy-duty, commercial use, or rather say municipal use. The space limitations, if we do renovate that building for anything, you're going to be, of course, limited by the footprint itself. As in any renovation, there are always, there are always compromises that need to be made, again, contrasted with a new construction. There's a diagram in the handout that I gave you that talks about the overlap of public access, the Fire Department emergency access. If this building is retained for any kind of public use, public access is going to be from Foster Street up to the back of the site, and will directly cut across the path of emergency response vehicles from the Fire Department. Anecdotally, we know that in the past, there have been a number of close calls, accident-wise. It's an unsafe situation, and certainly not an ideal, ideal organization for the site. And finally, if we do do any kind of... the path of emergency response vehicles from the fire department. Anecdotally, we know that in the past there have been a number of close calls accident-wise. It's an unsafe situation and certainly not an ideal organization for the site. And finally, if we do do any kind of major improvement to the apparatus space attached to the existing headquarters building, if the building is, the old fire, the old police station, rather, is in the wrong place, it's going to be an obstacle to provide for that emergency response. So the conclusion there is, in our best judgment, it probably should be removed as part of the overall project. Existing apparatus garage, on the other hand, is a more sound building. Structurally, it's in pretty good shape. That having been said, it is not in compliance with current seismic structural, seismic and structural codes, as well as other building codes, energy codes and the like. So can it retain its current use? The answer is yes, but for a public safety building, to not meet these current public safety codes is not, is not the best situation. It is in poor, it is in relatively poor repair. Of course, you know it needs roofing, siding, the sheeting is gone. It needs some serious upgrading with respect to the heat, ventilation, lighting and the like. Right now, the apparatus that's in it is crammed into the building. It barely fits in this very little space around the vehicles. This creates a dangerous situation for the staff circulating, especially during an emergency response where these things are, you know, barreling out of the building and potentially you have personnel that are in between them or getting into them. As well as a completely inadequate provision, completely inadequate provisions for storage space in the building as well. All of these vehicles have a lot of gear, a lot of equipment that is associated with them. That stuff needs to be parked near where the vehicles are parked. This building really doesn't have room for those. And finally, and it may be a little more difficult to explain, but the fact that it's remote from the main building is a problem. Whenever there's a call, you have to move, whenever there's any kind of business, whether it's emergency activity or just a routine activity on the site, you have to move from one building across the parking lot to the other, to get the trucks, to maintain the trucks, to answer a call. It's inconvenient, it slows the process down, it does impact emergency response time, and it's just a terribly inefficient way of doing things. Fire station really wants to have everything under one roof, if it's possible. As I said, there is a diagram in the handout that explains how that works. As I said, we did a program. It listed all the spaces that we needed. And that program is reflected in the floor plans that we have submitted to you. The mission here was to maximize the use of the existing building. We've taken every square foot that we can use. We're basically looking at gutting that building. It needs to be completely upgraded with respect to its mechanical, electrical systems, its seismic issues and so forth. We are restoring it to current standards and at the same time making it functionally operate for the department. We are providing for the program needs, and among them, much more apparatus space, eighteen-foot-wide apparatus space, which allows for easy access, ready access to the vehicles, storage of all of the vehicles under a roof, space for light maintenance and basically safe, safe, efficient circulation around. We're providing quarter spaces, bunk rooms, day rooms, kitchen for the staff, administration area, offices, a conference room, a meeting room, which they have now. It'd be a larger meeting room than there is. And it would be, of course, a meeting room that would be accessible for the public and be able to be accessed by the public without interfering with fire station operations. We have a fire prevention office that's adjacent to the front door, so all that public business can occur. Easily access to the public, again, without being disrupted inside the building. And then support facilities, decontamination, as facilities go, there's really nothing in the station that provides that adequately now. Very important thing, you know, keeping gear and personnel clean and safe and healthy. SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus, a place to maintain and maintain the air packs, fill them with sterile air, some repair, lights, again, I emphasize, light repair facilities and of course, storage. In addition, we're looking at minimizing the cost of the project because most of this building, in terms of square footage, is a bar, is a big, big empty space. And the most efficient way, the most economical way we could, we felt we could approach that is by using a pre-engineered steel building. Can dress it up on the outside with masonry and do some nice detailing, maybe some arches over the doors, that sort of thing to give it a character that would be suitable for the town, but at the same time really reduce the building cost. And as I said, it's almost an eight thousand square foot box that's down in the back of the building. So there's some major costs there. Very briefly, the plans that we're showing. On the first floor, the plan shown in blue is the administration area. The white is, we have meeting room and the public spaces as well as the support services for the apparatus. And on the colored area on the second floor is the bunk, day room, dining room, kitchen area. And we have a few, a few quick perspectives. We're still developing the exterior look of the building, but these are some of our initial forums and for that. That's where we are with the, oh, and I guess we should talk about the cost, price. Oh, yes. Oh, yes, the money. Our current estimate suggests the total project cost is around six point six million dollars. This is inclusive of fees, fit-up, demolition, everything. The construction portion of it is about five point three and the rest of the soft costs. And again, as I said, these are, these are initial numbers. They include roughly ten percent, roughly ten percent contingency for construction, which will vary depending upon how far into the future we're going to make this happen.
Is that the total site project?
Yes.
You mean demolition of the police, the old police station, demolition of the building on back and all of the landscaping and everything else that needs to be done around the building?
It is.
Okay.
We will get back to you with updated numbers and findings.
Part of the agreement we have with, well, is he has to get a professional estimate. We have that in the budget. So he's gonna, well, get a professional estimate for what we see here.
You get the one.
Excellent.
Those numbers are actually, when you look around stations that are being built, those are very even.
It's actually cost a five point two. It'd only cost six point two to build a brand-new police station. So we're saving a million dollars.
There you go.
Just a quick question.
Yeah. Have you noticed you don't have an elevator in here? You're not required to have an elevator? I don't know, messages is slow. The second floor is a staff-only, staff-only space. It's just, it's just a quarters.
At the meeting room, we have, will be handicap accessible.
Okay. Everybody, hopefully, it's actually very nice looking building.
So you talked about the police station, and the old police station is not worth it, you know, no mechanicals. And you talked about this building that said, you know, you need all the mechanicals and things like that. So, I mean, there truly is value, I have to assume that, in keeping that building and not starting from scratch?
What, the...
Existing fire.
Oh, the existing building.
Yeah, the existing fire station, yeah.
Oh. Oh, yeah. I was gonna say so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. For numbers, I mean, it's a major building. And I think that it's a sound building and to build that much square footage, you have, you have to show there. It is, it is substantial.
Okay. You just sound like everything else inside didn't seem to be, needs to be retrofitted, okay?
It needs, well, the thing of it is, we could probably do it that way. We could go in and renovate it, you know, a piece at a time or save what we could. That would probably end up costing more money. It's just similar to gutting. And I think there's also kind of a historic quality. It may not be a historic building, but it's a iconic building.
I was waiting for the groans when I asked the question. I didn't know.
Yeah.
I got a couple of questions. You have, it might be directorate, you, chief. Well, the diagram shows the problem currently with people coming into the fire area and cars seeing that fire is coming out. If you were to take down the old police station, the whole new building is built, is there a change to the current parking lot? So you'll have clear access without cars being parked yet?
Yes. The new pattern would be having the garage bays would be facing Fay Park. So they would be able to access straight out to Wilderness Road and then out the lot.
Out toward Wilderness and down.
Correct. That way, we would be able to maintain the existing lot, possibly change the parking pattern. And then on the far side of the lot, like as if you were proceeding up Wilderness Road, we're looking at the option or the possibility of adding additional parking at the far end of the lot for, potentially for Fay Park or for the fire station as well and the conservation property that abuts. So we would ultimately, it appears that we would be increasing the parking spaces out of there.
Another question goes back to the police station again. And as far as the PMBC, do you see that as having any use possible? Or should we just, I read the report, too, it talks about the concrete having to be changed and new piping put in. I mean, straightforward, does it really have a use nowadays for the town?
Yes.
It does. But would be...
Whatever you want it to do. Well, it wouldn't be a garage, but we talked about parking wrecked in there or some other department. It's, you know, it's usable in that aspect, however. The report that Greg gave you was pretty much what we told you last year when we had it all, got it out, that it is a structurally sound building. But that's about the best we can do with it and that's about as far as we can go. And when you read the report that Bernie Doherty, the structural engineer did, he gets more in-depth on what it would take to bring that building back to life. So...
I guess the question is, overall, in your opinion, is it, reading the report you just talked about, my impression of, by reading this, would seem like there's, we're a lot better off getting rid of it at this point than trying to have it for use?
Well, that's the decision you have to make. I mean, again, what Greg said is you have fifteen to twenty percent of a building there and then you have to decide in your own mind what the, whether the cost to fix it up is throwing good money after bad. And this is stuff we talked about last year, bringing it into current codes. Again, everything that's in this report. And, you know, it's just one of those decisions you have to make. The report from the fire station clearly states that it's a detriment to the property to put that new building up. But on the other hand, when you do the old one, that's just, that's a decision that has to be made.
If we have fifteen to twenty percent of that value, what is that, what's that dollar number, what that value is? What's the value of the building and what's fifteen percent of it? Are you talking fifteen thousand? We're talking, you're talking, you know, five, five times that?
The only time I ever get myself in trouble is when I try to remember things that I don't have handy. I'll give you those numbers. I have, I have the numbers.
I think it would help frame the discussion of, you know, what's the dollar value that we're talking about for, you know, that we would, that we would have to forego if that building were just torn down and not rebuilt? What's the, what's the dollar value? And if that's a small enough value, then maybe we won't deal with it.
I think the other part of that you have to look at is if you're gonna save that building, it reconfigures the whole area as far as the parking and so forth.
If the highest and best use of the site is for the expansion purposes of the fire station, then that sort of dictates what we're, you know, what direction we might, might be in terms of that's interesting.
I just wanna make it perfectly clear that the building committee was asked to weigh in on a recommendation on that. And the building committee is reluctant to offer recommendations. We don't get the big bucks like you guys. No, we're giving you, we're giving you the information and you make those decisions. So if you've noticed, I dance pretty good around it.
Think I need some dance lessons?
I'll continue to do the dance. That decision is yours.
Thanks.
In order of magnitude, you're in, if you're, if you're in six figures with that percentage, it's probably...
All right. Thanks for the update. Many more discussions about this. More tap dancing.
So, more, more, more of the next steps. What are you...
They're gonna complete the report.
Complete the report, yes. Continue to refine the, refine the design a little bit more detail according to next time. So we, all we're doing at this point is still... You will, the next, the next report should give you all of the information you need to make a decision about how you want to take this, where you want to take this project, the next step, the next step.
So we'll see you again. Thank you.
Be honest.
Thanks, guys. We should probably open a table.
My job, Greg, taking room for five minutes.
Yeah, let's, we've got a public hearing.
Ten. Ten later, then you wait. You wanna wait, can you do five now or ten?
Yeah, you wanna, can I just open this public hearing and then I'll get right back to you?
Absolutely.
We can get through you pretty quickly. So what we're gonna do is, because we're running a little bit behind here, we're gonna open the public hearing. We're gonna hold off for a few minutes. We'll get back to the Littleton Medical Reserve Corps, get that done pretty quickly, and then we'll go back into the public hearing. So, let's see if I got something here to go with.
No, you've already read the public hearing.
I've already read it, so I don't need to...
Yeah, we're, we're...
Okay. So we're just gonna open the public hearing at this point and kind of put it on ice for just a few minutes so we can continue with our agenda. We've got one quick item for you guys and then we'll get right back to you, okay? Is that all right with you? All right. Anne.
Thank you.
Medical, Littleton Medical Reserve Corps.
Okay, I'm Anne Laurie. I'm the vice chair of the Board of Health and I oversee the medical reserve corps and all of the response activities that they do. I'm here tonight just to give you an update on an EDS. What is an EDS? It's an emergency dispensing site. It's needed when we have to administer vaccine or dispense any type of antibiotics in response to any kind of infectious disease outbreak. It could be a small outbreak, like in a school meningitis. It could be a large outbreak, like weaponized anthrax. And we're mandated by MDPH through CDC to have a plan for our EDS. We just went through our EDS processing. And we were reviewed by MDPH and we got a good score. I don't know the final score yet, but I told it was good. Took months to get that in order. And thank you to everybody who helped provide documents and help with this. So we are about the point to drill our EDS. And what is a drill? A drill is where you're gonna take all the steps needed to do a regular EDS. Let me back up to EDS for just a second, for everyone's sake. So an EDS is a mass clinic. It's designed to treat a hundred percent of the population in either twenty-four to forty-eight hours, depending on what is happening in the community. If it's weaponized anthrax, it's twenty-four. If it's hepatitis A, it would probably be, you know, forty-eight hours or more. And an EDS will put everyone through in that amount of time. We have our site, which is Littleton High School, and that's what the plan is written for. And they're designed to be set up with one day of notification and to provide whatever treatment is mandated by CDC to MDPH. And we are gonna be drilling this as the throughput. And the throughput... And the throughput is the amount of people we have to treat in an hour to get everybody through in either twenty-four or forty-eight hours. Our weapon of choice is weaponized anthrax because you can only, you only need your household head to show up for that. And our throughput for that is a hundred and fifty per hour. So we will have, what I just handed out to you all, we'll have the different stations set up and we will be running, hopefully, students that will sign up for community hours, community service hours, to run through this for us. We also have a couple of Boy Scout troops set up to help us with this. We do need our MRC volunteers to show and assist with this. They will provide most of the staff. And we need community volunteers other than students if they would like to run through the drill. There will be a cable PSA that will be in the papers. It will be through the public sites, through the schools, and we're going to kind of go about it that way so we can get as many people as possible to this. The date is May eleventh. We had another date, but we needed to move it because of the needs of the schools. So it's Saturday, May eleventh, eight to noon. I know it's the election day. That's the best we could do going forward and backward on the dates. Our staffing, the MRC, Littleton Volunteer Corps and MRC will provide the bulk of the staff for our drill. However, I would like to make a pitch to anybody and everybody, if they'd like to be involved with this, to come and show up. And you can either email me or call me through the Board of Health Office because in the event that we need to really do this, we only have about fifty percent of our staffing staff. And I will be talking with some of the department heads more about that at a later time. So that's an EDS and an EDS drill and that's what we're up to. Thank you very much. Thank you for dealing with medical marijuana last time and thank you for dealing with public safety. Really appreciate it.
One more time, May eleventh.
May eleventh, eight to noon. Yep, and contact me through the Board of Health Office if you'd like to help with that. Thank you.
Okay. Now, come on down in front center.
Well, Alvin and Bob Moran. As you recall, back in December of last year, we were here on a request to modify the class one license for the property that would apply to two twenty-two Great Road, having to do with the dealership across the street. The current class one license allows vehicles to be unloaded behind the property at two twenty-two. We went to the planning board, got an amendment for site plan approval to allow some parking of cars temporarily behind the building, not visible from the public way, and temporary only. Since that time, no cars have been parked back there. As you recall, the conditions of approval did not, from the planning board, did not allow generally that customers would be brought back there. It would be for times of high inventory when Bob has to take delivery of vehicles. He can't put them into the, they're not sold. He can't bring them across the street yet because there isn't room. They would eventually flow over there though and it would be in fits and starts depending upon the market during the course of the year. Generally, there's about seventy-five MB parking spaces back there, fifteen of which are more than the number of parking spaces which were required by the zoning bylaw for that project. But there are obviously many more parking spaces than needed for that project. The planning board allowed fifty of the parking spaces to be used for temporary parking. So we submitted an application to modify the class one dealer's license so that it would be clear that as part of the class one dealer's license, it would be okay that some new cars were parked on property at two twenty-two Great Road. So I came here in December, Bob was away. You asked me some questions. I think the primary concern you had was what about the other tenants? Because some of the tenants before, they had an opportunity to talk to Bob about the prospect, were concerned about how it would impact on their businesses. I think the comment I made back at the December meeting is that Bob, as the property owner and the landlord, had a duty to keep his tenants happy and that would be his, one of his priorities to keep them happy and wouldn't want to do anything which would upset his tenants. He also has concerns about the new project across the street at, I think it's at two thirty-five Great Road, the old Fritzy Church Building, the old doctor's office, the old car dealership, whatever you want to call it. What's going to happen when that is renovated? There's parking on that site for the employees and the customers of that site. There's actually four public parking spaces which would be available for the general public as well at that site. Bob has to be honest that during the construction process, there will be some of the employees that will be with the dealership that will park across the street at two twenty-two Great Road. But once the project is completed, all the parking for two thirty-five Great Road will be on premises and won't be across the street. So there we have it. And ultimately, the request is that the class one license be amended with a note that the parking of new vehicles would be permitted consistent with the planning board's site plan modification.
So I got a couple of questions. On two, at two thirty-five now, I know there's cars that are parked down sending their employees. So when you start construction, and let's just say we approve this request, where are those people going to park?
Across the street.
Where are they?
Well, we're going to take, right now, some employees, like there's thirty-five cars. Fifteen of them will stay on site. We're going to move some new cars up in the back and put all the women who work their handicap or other women who cross and going over the construction or going across the street on location at the dealership. So out back, we'll put even some of the employees who will be working on that construction job and their trucks will have to pack out back behind the building.
Behind the building at two twenty-two. All behind the hall. All right. One more, is any questions?
Well, I think we're here for issue of class license, but the experts on this, the planning board, have taken a look at the logistics and, you know, as far as zoning, as far as operating class license, class one license, you know, whatever we can do to get local businesses to, you know, be more efficient or whatever we can do to help local businesses, I think we should do. So as far as that minimum class license, I don't have a problem because, you know, the planning board has to look at, that's why we look at the logistics, whether or not they can fit the cars over there, you know, any type of public safety or anything like that has been viewed, so.
Yeah, I, my only concern was what I expressed way back in December too, is that the amount of cars that are currently there, it seems to me that right now you have the whole front of this parking lot taken up with employee parking that's across the street. They're there for the morning, you know, till the end of the day. And then two thirty-five is, the church building, that's filled with your employees also. And just like Ted said, the planning board has already made the decision and this is the type of thing that they concentrate on. I just have a problem trying to fit all those cars in even, and I like the drawing you saw of two thirty-five, what a great improvement it's going to be for the town. I really appreciate the work you've done there. But when they build that parking lot out back, and you had mentioned public parking, how much public parking will it be after employee parking is on that parking lot? Just four spots?
Well, that's all they want.
That was a deal we struck with the planning board. I mean, there could be, depending upon the amount of business that's there, there could be some additional spaces, but to be four available to the general public, the idea being that people would park there and walk to other stores up and down Great Road. And the planning board's trying to encourage that as other sites get developed down the road, so there'll be more of that eventually up and down Great Road.
The front of the building is from retail, new creative retail that's going there. It's part of the deal. I put three stores in the front.
Right. I was at those.
Parking is going to be in the back for them as well.
So at two thirty-five, when two thirty-five's done, there'll be parking spaces for people who are conducting business and coming in and out. All right, so they won't have to go across the street and park.
That's correct.
No, they will not. And my last question before I turn over, you mentioned temporary. How temporary is that? Is this going to be something that from now on, we'll always see fifty cars behind the building every single day?
I can answer that. The planning board, number one, wants us to come back a year after they granted the permit, which was back in September. So back in September, we have to go back to the board. The board has, the planning board has another chance to see whether this has worked or not. But by temporary, they have said temporary in nature and at least once a year, no vehicles will be stored in this location. And in the spirit of this, since this decision, Bob has parked no cars back there, correct?
Right. But if a business grows, you have employees. We employ a hundred and forty people. A lot of them are kids part-time. Maybe thirty kids, thirty people. Behind people working four hours a day, they come in at seven and they go home, you know. The business has grown and I need parking. And behind that building, there's plenty of parking behind the building. All the tenants are very happy. No one's complaining at all at this point. They come to me and I'm over there, every one of them. They all have their own parking. Down front, people want to park down front anyways. You're going to shop, shopping. Hot Griller has their own parking. The DK has their own. Dunkin' Donuts has their own. So really, it's the first ten, five or six rows in the front, people park. I mean, the thing is, the bottom line, the business is growing and I do need employees and parking, so.
So does the permit say, does the planning board permit say how many cars?
Fifty.
Maximum of fifty.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it'll hold.
It'll hold seventy-five.
But those are all cars that are coming in to be moved over to the lot to be sold.
Correct, correct.
So additionally, how many employees would we have back there? Do you project?
It's going to be a mixture of all. It's going to be a mixture of people, employees, workers at the site.
But in the peak of when you're going to be bringing in cars to be sold?
Right.
That's the number that's limited at fifty?
Correct.
Fifty total, all by all means?
We just, if we do drop them off, which we never do, if we get a blizzard and they can't get up the hill, they'll park there, unload and leave them there. And the next day, we take them up and put them in the hill. That's what we do.
I'm just trying to figure.
And that's what they want us to do.
The decision was applicable to storage of vehicles. So no more than fifty vehicles would be stored. And that would be vehicles that are unregistered, they don't belong to anybody and they're just parked there.
So it's fifty plus employees? Is what we're talking?
But likewise, for purposes of the license, it would be for vehicles' storage. That's the request we have before this board because this is an amendment to his class one dealer's license. It has to do with his inventory.
We did it all along. We've always done it. Nothing has changed.
So if the selectmen's license parroted the planning board's language of allow up to fifty new cars to be stored on the property on a temporary basis?
Perfect.
That would, then it would be saying the same thing.
Correct.
Would you have a problem with us also reevaluating this after a year's period of time?
Well, we'd have to reevaluate it after six months because the planning board's reevaluating it in September.
This is annual license, we should write.
Right.
You reevaluate how many cars Donlins come pack or anybody else? Why do I have to be under the spotlight? And I run my business, I think, pretty well. Why do I have to be under the spotlight and counten cars and worry about this as long as it's safety? I mean.
Could I offer that as a practical matter, that whatever change, if the planning board were to make a change, and let's say lower it to forty, then the fact that you've approved fifty will mean that the new answer is forty because both of the approvals come into play. That's, you know, even now, you've got planning board approval for the temporary parking there, but you don't have selectmen approval. So if you get both, then you can, then you can have the temporary parking on whatever terms you say.
That's true. Rather than even, rather, I'm sorry. Rather than put a number in here, would it be easier just to say in accordance with the planning board approved and future amendments to their permit? That way, they don't have to go back and amend this permit and that one if something happened. If the planning board admits that.
Again, for the same reason, that if the plant, that the answer, whether you put fifty in your license or not, the answer is fifty. It's up to fifty because the planning board sent that. If the planning board should remove the fifty restriction and yours is silent on it, then it will be whatever the planning board decides, so.
Yeah, I meant that, you know, the planning board, that's what they do if they plan their own cars and they parking and things like that.
Isn't the planning board, aren't you guys looking at the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot there?
We took care of that.
We're going to reconfigure it.
Just minor changes in the curbing to make it easier for people to get in and out.
Yeah, we're doing that as part of, as part of this, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, it was already approved. We approved that when we, before the planning board.
But I'm paying for it. Haven't done.
Yes.
They're not paying for it.
Oh, you are doing it, yes, yes.
The expense of about thirty thousand dollars.
At the request of the planning board.
What? At the request of the planning board?
Yeah, at the request of the planning board, we did that. They brought it up.
Do you have any more kind of, you say for now, just to make sure we got it. No, I'm fine. All right. I'll open up to the public for any comment. Public, any comment?
Motion to close the hearing.
Yeah, we got a motion. Yes, we need a motion closed here.
Second.
Okay, one second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. With that, I'll look for a motion. Unless you want to discuss this round. You want to discuss a little bit more?
No.
Okay. Thought you might want it to have a little more debate.
Move that the Board of Slock and Ball pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Subsections fifty-eight through fifty-nine, to approve the request of RR Moran Limited doing business as Acton Toyota of Littleton to amend its class one license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble new and used motor vehicles or parts thereof at two twenty-one Great Road to allow temporary parking in accordance with the planning board's permit of new vehicles at two twenty-two Great Road across from the Acton Toyota of Littleton dealership.
Second. One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Police chief.
And the town council here also talking about the valuable secondhand bylaw.
Tom, how are you?
Hi, thanks. How are you?
Chief, you coming down for this or you just sitting in the back?
I was told to stand down by Attorney Harrington.
Okay.
And this is on our agenda. Last week, we received the approval by the Attorney General of the valuable secondhand items bylaw that was passed by the November fourteenth special town meeting. That bylaw is scheduled to take effect on March twenty-eighth, the date of its second publication. The letter that we had from the Attorney General approving the bylaw raised certain issues or comments which seemed best addressed in regulations that the Board of Selectmen would need to adopt to carry out the purposes of that bylaw. And so Town Council and the Chief of Police have worked together on the proposed set of regulations that you have that Tom will walk us, Tom with the chief will walk us.
Yeah. So, thank you, Keith. So we did get our approval from the Attorney General's office and they offered us comments on, kind of, in outline form. Make sure that you're going to hold your hearings properly. Make sure that if you're going to revoke a permit, that you have reasons. Make sure that if you're charging a fee for a license, it's a reasonable fee and in line with state law. And make sure that if you're going to terminate a license, that you're doing it properly. So I guess the easiest way to do this would probably be to just walk you through the regulations so we can kind of address how each works. And one of the, one of the helpful things that the Attorney General did in her letter was brought up the various statutes that come to play in secondhand stores that deal in gold, silver, pewter, secondhand electronics, that sort of thing. Not saying that what we did is illegal, but just pointing out there are, you know, in addition to your bylaw, there are statutes. the various statutes that come to play in second-hand stores that deal in gold, silver, pewter, second-hand electronics, that sort of thing. Not saying that what we did is illegal, but just pointing out there are, you know, in addition to your bylaw, there are statutes on this, so be aware when you're applying your bylaw that you're also applying the statute and that you're applying it fairly. So the first part comes from Chapter 140, and it just points out that this is Section 11-1, that the bylaw doesn't apply to charitable, benevolent, fraternal, religious, or political activities, which I think kind of speaks for itself. The second part goes to the application, and we require that the application be made in writing. Part three requires that the applicant be the main operator of the business, so that we know who's doing it. Part four is the license fee, and I chose $100, and it has, I pulled the number out of the air, because it's a nice round number, but that would be, I guess, the, certainly I want your input on all the sections, but on that section, I have zero ownership to that number. It's just a number I plugged in. Section five requires that the Chief of Police review all applications and forward his comments to you in writing. Section six requires legal notice, and this just gets to making sure that when someone comes to you for a license, you know, you're giving them due process. You're letting the people of the town know that you're going to hold a hearing. The hearing is on a date certain, and the person coming forward is identified in a notice. It requires that in Section 11-7, that you be reimbursed for the cost of advertising, so you're not out of pocket for that. The Attorney General points out that to make sure that, right, you don't issue a permit, you have reasons. Now, those reasons can be broad, and we say in this that it's in your sole discretion. So that, you know, we get back to, you can deny someone's application for a good reason, you can deny someone's application for no reason, but you can't deny someone's application for a bad reason. So, you know, bad reason is based on someone's race or religion, or something like that. Go to 11-9, and we get to violations and penalties. The Attorney General pointed out that there are penalties for certain violations built into the statute. We have kind of a broad $300 a day through our 21D process penalty. So they point out that make sure that you're applying them both at the same time, and I think oftentimes, we would probably be fined for something different than what the state would be fined for. But she just points out, if the state has already set a fine, that's the fine, in areas where the state hasn't set a fine. Compliance under Section 10 just requires that whoever has a license has to comply with each and every section of the regulations and the code, and that you reserve the right to reject or deny any application and to revoke any license as you deem to be in the best interest of the town. So again, you have broad discretion, we're just setting out the rules. This is the, Section 11-11 is kind of a catch-all, where she raised various statutes throughout. I just wanted to make sure that they were all listed here, so that who's ever applying it, and I think that's going to be the chief, he's keeping in mind that these are the statutes he needs to look at. Finally, Section 11-12, violation and suspension or revocation of license. You can do so, you need to do so with the initiation of a letter to the license holder, and then you're going to hold a public hearing to consider the revocation. And you will commence the hearing within two weeks of the notice of attempt to suspend or revoke the license. You'll issue your decision in writing, and your decision is final. So, you know, I kind of pulled from your other regulations, trying to find kind of something that you guys generally do in similar situations. But again, timeframes, amounts, I came up with, and if you have it, you know, if you want to change that, that's fine. I think my intent was just to make sure that the chief has what he needs and is looking at what he needs to look at, so that if there is an action that needs to take place, we're not running afoul of the statute.
Specific to 11-9, violations and penalties, no, not violations, 11-8, reasons for issuing a permit, and 11-10, compliance required.
Yeah.
So can you run us back through, what you've given here is absolute carte blanche to whatever reason we want for denial of a permit or determining what compliance is or isn't. That's completely at the discretion of the board, is that correct?
Well, under 11-8, so those are two different sections. Reasons for not issuing a permit. No applicant shall receive a license if the board determines in its sole discretion that such licensure is not in the best interest of the town. It's broad discretion.
There is no standard?
Your standard is in the best interest of the town. So if you can't satisfy that standard, you should be granting the license. I think that is a broad standard, but it is a standard.
And also, the ability to stand before a judge and articulate why you denied, obviously.
So the same thing with 11-10? Again, a standard is not defined, it's wide open.
Right. So you're saying that each and every section of your bylaw and your regulations has to be complied with to your satisfaction? And you're saying that if you determine that it's not being complied with to your satisfaction, that determination is final? And then the final piece is you reserve the right to reject or deny any application and to revoke any license as it deems to be in the best interest of the town? So again, you're coming back to that same standard. Your standard is, you can do it if it's in the best interest of the town. If you don't, if you don't think you can reach that standard, then you can't take the action.
Well, you've reached the standard just by saying it. That's my point. If you say, if, here's what I'm getting at. Reasonable language. But in 2012, the standard is accordance to, or 2013, is accordance with these five people. In 2014, it might be vastly different. I'm just a fan of sort of putting down what is the standard, so that it can be uniformly and consistently applied over time.
Go ahead.
I would say to that, Mr. McCurdy, that if the license holder does not satisfy one of the requirements within our bylaw, or a requirement within one of the governing Massachusetts general laws, then we would have reason to bring him in for a review of his license. And it would be incumbent upon me, as the individual bringing him before the licensing board, to convince you that, one, he has violated one of those things, and that he had done it in a purposeful manner. Otherwise, my bringing that individual forward for that violation would have no cause or any basis. And to give an example of how or when you would get to the level of revoking or suspending, say we had a business, as we do now, that takes in gold and coins. If we found that they have taken in items that were stolen from a house break on several occasions, and we found that they did so by not following some of these standards which you and the townspeople have developed, or the legislature, then that would be cause to take their license or take action against their license.
Okay, so in follow-up to that, this would go to you, Tom. So if he came in and said, they did this, and it violated, I'll pick another number out of here, then our reason for, in either not issuing the permit or compliance required, would have to relate back to another part of this regulation or state law?
All right, so let's, I think it might be easier to put an example on it. So in some instances, the dealer is supposed to hold the item for 21 days before selling it. So what if, so the chief comes forward and says, this guy is selling gold coins seven days after he taken, he's done it on three occasions. So I, you know, I want some sort of disciplinary action. So it's then incumbent on this board to say, is, okay, so he's violated the bylaw. What's my response? Is, should I slap his wrist? Should I revoke his license? What's in the best interest of the town? But there is a, I think to go to your point, there's a clear violation. So he's not bringing the guy in because he's too tall. You know, this guy is 6'8", and I don't like it, and I want you to revoke his license. Well, there's nothing he can point to that says that's a problem, and, you know, you're not, you can't revoke on that, but...
So one refers back to the other?
Yeah.
So, okay. Now, then, that's good. So what is the avenue if somebody is aggrieved by a decision we make? Is there an avenue of appeal?
There's always an avenue of appeal. You don't have to, nor is it the town's job to lay out how to appeal a decision of this board, but there, it's called sussurare, which is a court's right to review a governing body's action. If, you know, so like in zoning, there's a clear avenue of appeal. The statute tells us that if you don't like a special permit, and you're in a particular class of residents, you can appeal it within 20 days or 30 days, whatever the statute is. When a statute or bylaw is silent, you automatically have the right to take it to court and have the deciding body's action reviewed.
My questions are answered, thanks.
No, I think we're all set. You know, we put this before Attorney General, and they gave some things to tie up a bow, and seems to be what you did. Keith, the only question I have is, I know when we were on Board of Health, we had to always publish regulations for a couple times, and I know you don't miss much, but I just want to make sure there's no, I don't see any descriptions of advertising down here.
No, there's no requirement in our bylaws to publish them. I mean, I have worked in towns where the bylaws have required publishing of the text of regulations before and after publication, and I know Board of Health regulations under the statute, under Chapter 111, Section 5, are required to be posted and published afterwards. There's no requirement here. I mean, you know, in about 15 minutes, it'll be uploaded and available on the town website, but there's no requirement. The other question that I had to look up is that for policies, your selectmen's rules of procedures distinguish between regulations and policies, and if this were a policy, you require two readings. You receive it once, and then you vote it at another meeting. You do not have that requirement under the chapter dealing with regulations. Moreover, since the bylaw takes effect on Thursday, I think it would be well for us to have our procedures in place, these regulations, by that time, which would mean that you should adopt these regulations tonight, so they can take effect by Thursday, before Thursday.
Another question for Chief. How do you police some of the things? Like, somebody comes in and they're buying gold coins, and you have to wait the 21 days? I mean, how can you possibly regulate that and know what someone's bringing in at any time?
Because the individual that takes them in, the business that takes them in, has to document the individual that brings them in through identification with a picture, and also the items that are exchanged. And this is not for pawn shops, this is not for consignment shops or antique dealers. This is strictly a retail business transaction, where the person brings something in, there's money exchanged, and the ownership is immediately exchanged. In a consignment shop, the item is brought in, and the sale between the two parties is drawn out over a protracted time, however long it takes for that item to sell. So what we're worried about is quick transactions where items that are stolen are brought in, ownership is changed, and then ownership is changed again quickly. That's what we want, to protect our citizens and the citizens from our surrounding towns.
And going back to the fee that you took around number...
That's a good point.
Any idea how much time it will take your department?
You know, my attitude in regards to fees is, this is a normal course of our business. This is what we do for the town as a service, to do the paperwork and so forth for the licensing. So I'm fine with no fee or a minimal fee.
That was my question about the fee.
It's a normal course of business. That's why you pay us. That's why the citizens pay us, to process their license request.
And the fee is as much for the board's time and, you know, the town administrator's staff time to get you prepared.
When you threw the $100 fee out there, did you look at any, has any of the towns adopted this that you can compare the fee to?
Yes, they had, and that was actually the fee that was suggested, suggested, excuse me, when this bylaw suggestion was put out there by other towns that adopted it. But I don't personally or professionally see any reason to follow that, unless the board wants to.
So your recommendation is no fee?
No, my recommendation would be a fee consistent with the other licenses given out in town. You know, some licenses are...
A dog license, $10.
Right. But liquor licenses are obviously much more.
Right. Wanting any thoughts on this fee, on financing? No?
My first run through it, but...
$100 is not unreasonable for...
No, it's not.
I mean, Tom looked at over what we're doing elsewhere, otherwise, so...
It was, yeah, it was kind of a, I thought it was a safe number. I just didn't want you to think that I had...
Suggesting.
So you were depriving us of income?
All right.
Just refresh my memory, how often are they going to get a license? Is it annual?
Yes.
That's $100 a year? Okay.
You know, it's like the ice cream licenses now.
Lord Members, any thoughts on that $100? Is that the fee we should go with?
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Okay. I'll look for a motion. Unless there's any other discussion?
The Board of Selectmen vote to approve the proposed amendment to the Board of Selectmen Regulations, Chapter 11. Valuable second-hand items bylaw implementation policy prepared by the Chief of Police and Town Council.
Second.
Moving second at all, as a favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Good night.
Can I have a question?
Okay. Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, we've got the annual special town meeting order of our...
Yes, a couple of procedural motions, although substantively, I think there, I've gotten some feedback that perhaps the order of articles as presented might change. I heard both from Ted and from Jim, to see if the sewer article could be moved up to an earlier point in the agenda, in the warrant, rather, which if so, you may want to put it at the number six position, following the operating budget and the water enterprise fund budget.
The only question I have is, do we have to go right into special town meeting at 7:30, so we could be in the middle of an article discussing it, and then have to jump into special?
Yes, but you won't be in one of these articles.
That's what I'm saying, so it should be...
That if, there's no, we will not have completed work on the, let's say, the operating budget by 7:30. We barely started that discussion, so when we come out of special town meeting, we will be having our debate on the operating budget, then the water, and then, you know, if you...
That's my concern, I didn't want to have to interrupt something like that. All right. Something does get interrupted, but it's planned to be something like budget or something.
So the order of the articles is one motion. The other motion is to refer to... The other motion is to refer to zoning amendments that were received on Friday to the Planning Board. And on that, I'd want to mention the Planning Board has scheduled a joint, what they would like to be a joint meeting with the selectmen and the Fletchers and others for this Thursday, the 28th, at 8:30 PM. Because at 8 o'clock, they have a public hearing on the zoning amendment for open space development. Attorney DeShane will be there with his clients. He's indicated that he, he will be there to continue the discussion. They'd like to have a, continue to have a, you know, a discussion with the town about their property, an issue that the Planning Board will have on Thursday night. Should you vote to refer these articles to them, the Planning Board will then need to decide whether, whether and when they're going to have the public hearings on them. They have 65 days to hold a public hearing. They could hold it, they could schedule a public hearing for this, for their, for the fourth Thursday in April, which is a regular meeting date for the Planning Board. I talked to Mark Montanari on, on Friday, and he indicated that the Planning Board would discuss that. They would discuss on this Thursday when, when the public hearing would be held on those two petitioned articles. But it sort of required, you have to, you have to actually refer them to the Planning Board in order for them to be in their court.
Bruce, you were talking about moving the sewer article to be, what would be Article Six?
Number Six, following the water enterprise budget.
I don't have an issue with that.
Well, I, I would like to see us get through all the budgetary items. You know, when you're talking about the stabilization fund and the capital items, that's pretty important stuff, and I would think that maybe that should go first and we should put it at the end of, end of that particular, when we solve all that budget package together.
I see the rationale, let me just explain my rationale, because it hasn't gotten out there yet, is that I think there's going to be a lot of people showing up for that and a lot of people who don't typically attend and maybe just want to come in for that and want to go. I think that's just going to be the, that's going to be the attendance grabber this year. So that's the only thing I was thinking is, if people want to come in for that and then go, I was thinking of trying to get them out there as early as possible. I'm not arguing with your, your point, that's my rationale.
So you're saying Alex could put it after Article Seven?
Yeah, we could, I mean, Article Five isn't really, Article Four is the budget essentially, and then you have stabilization fund, and then you have capital items.
We may end up making Article Six, the stabilization fund on the consent calendar.
How many of these are consent?
Very, very few.
Okay.
You know, the Articles One and Two, I'm sorry, Article One and Three, Article Six possibly. The revolving funds we usually have on the consent calendar, Chapter 90 funds. And I think we'd also this year want to have the new article that we're using now every year to, on the amounts of the exemptions. That is a routine article and could go in the consent calendar.
Isn't Kimball usually consent?
No.
No?
See, your work program also is on the consent calendar. We haven't finalized what it is, but it's not going to be more than four or five articles.
Yeah, okay.
So I would almost like to see the sewer article, what would be Article Eight if Article Five stays where it is? I'd really want to see Article Four, Six, Seven, sort of like a continuum of discussion because they are the, what's been worked on for months and months and months for a budget.
So would, so Four, Six, Seven going, so that'd be one, then now become one, Four, Six, Seven, and then Fifteen basically, obviously we renumbered, Fifteen and then Five, something like that?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Say that again.
So, Article Fifteen is securare. So would be One, Two, Three, Four, Six, Seven, Fifteen, Five.
Why did we move the water enterprise fund?
Well, I just thought, because it wasn't, I thought that, because it wasn't, to move, well, to move the stabilization fund and capital items up with the operating budget. Either way.
That's part of the operating budget.
Okay.
To me, if you want to put Article Fifteen before Article Eight, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, all right. It's not much difference, yeah.
So we're moving, basically we're moving-
Move it from the Fifteen to Number Eight, and then renumber accordingly. Okay, got it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the, on the order? I'll look for a motion, see if we can take care of that one. And then we'll talk about the other.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to direct the constable to post the warrants for the May 6th, 2013 annual special town meetings with the ordering of the articles listed as discussed as directed by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we've got two amendments that we've got to move to the Planning Board. Thoughts on these two? This kind of, this kind of came up out of nowhere.
Well, it came up in the void between whatever it is that happened at the Planning Board meeting last- We could go Thursday and, and as it was reported to us following Monday.
So these have been sufficiently filed that they're going on the warrant?
They're going, they're going to be on the warrant.
Well, then we need to, I mean, this is, this is zoning and planning board and things like that. We need to get some input from them. I mean, they're on, they're on the warrant, so we need some-
They can only be voted on by town meeting if the Planning Board holds its hearing and brings a recommendation to the voters. And they can't even do that if, until they, they can't even decide whether they're going to do that or not until the selectmen refer these articles to the Planning Board and, and put them in their court.
Again, this is swinging the gates open and just getting the stuff out in front of people?
Well, it's been a procedural vote to, you know, statute says we receive it and then we have, and then are to direct it to the-
So it's basically our duty to make sure we pass this one.
One quick question though, on the one that talks about extensive recreation permit, what would be the purpose of taking that out of our hands?
Well, if it's an extensive recreation, that falls on the Planning Board jurisdiction.
It's currently under ours.
It's currently under ours. That, of, of the amendments that are proposed, the, the, the Planning, the Planning Board or majority of them, assuming I heard them correctly, would like to support the change from the selectmen to the Planning Board as a special permit granting authority. That's what Mark reported that to us last week.
What you're saying has to do with the bylaw itself, not the process, or the-
No, the bylaw would need to be amended to strike Board of Selectmen and in certain place they're a planning board as the special permit granting authority.
Right, but it doesn't have anything to do with the process of getting it to town meeting?
And I, I agree that goes on for the discussion. I just can't figure out why this would be, obviously, I think when the zoning was put in and they did this, they put this one part of the authority part with the Board of Selectmen because it was a special extensive recreation that we might want to regulate, the type of thing that comes in town, then it goes to the Planning Board afterwards. That was my thought and impression, so I didn't know why that changes. It'll be worth a discussion when it goes to the Planning Board.
Right, so on Thursday night or, and then, or at town meeting, so. Because there's no change in it now, right, so.
So I don't know what, you know, how everybody sees this going to work with this change.
So can we make that decision on Thursday night, Keith?
Can you?
Who? Us. To defer this to the Planning Board since we're going to have a joint meeting. We have to make this decision tonight?
Well, if you think you're going to have a quorum on Thursday night, you can table it to then. I'm not sure what that accomplishes, so I don't know if Jim's back by that.
I have a sucker committed, all night, all day.
Mr. Alex, you going to be around?
I should be. But if we vote for it, we just allow it to be discussed, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're not saying that we're in, in favor, we're just kind of, if I'm understanding correct, Keith, we're just kind of balling it over.
It's a procedural motion, because the statute says that when a zoning amendment comes in, it gets filed with the selectmen, and the selectmen's function is to then refer to the Planning Board holding the hearing. It doesn't have to make sense, it's just, it's what the law says.
Right.
It'd be wrong for us to say, just, we wouldn't do that.
Right, exactly. I agree.
I was just questioning-
Now that I understand it a little bit better.
And then when the, but the bylaw itself, once it goes to-
You're not endorsing any of the zoning bylaws. You are referring them to the agency who was, who was required to hold a hearing on any zoning amendment before a town meeting can, can take it up.
And then even on Thursday, there's no change against, you know, we're always going to discuss, try to get to the bottom of it, but there's no change against it. Maybe on town meeting floor it gets changed, but, all right.
And these proposals don't change. I mean, they are, they are what they are. We have to take them as they've been dictated.
We're not making a recommendation whether we know or not.
We're just, we're just following the whole-
I would think typically the selectmen's recommendation would come after you hear what the Planning Board's report is, after their public hearing. Or you might want to go, in this case, I think you'd want to go to the public hearing.
On the petitioner, yeah, I know.
Whatever it is, so.
Who is the petitioner?
It's Attorney DeShane is the, is the contact person for both articles.
Oh, this is all, this is, okay. I got it, all right. I didn't see the first page.
Mr. Alex, when you had your hand up, you have a question?
Yes. I'm sure that the Littleton feasibility study of sewer is going to have an opportunity to make a presentation at town meeting. Is the, the opposition to sewer going to be allowed to make a presentation?
It's a moderator's call.
It's a moderator, yeah, it's a town meeting, it's a town meeting.
Do we have to talk to the moderator before that?
Yes, you would.
I'm sure that they're going to make a formal presentation.
Yeah, yeah, the, in fact, the moderator requires that he see the presentation before it's presented at town meeting. So we have, we have to run our presentations by the moderator first. And, and so any, anyone making a presentation should contact that.
Okay, thank you.
And he, you know, and he always allows presentations.
Yeah, I just want equal time, thank you.
Yeah.
I think at this point, I'm ready for a motion unless there's any more discussion on number two.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 48, subsection five, to refer to the Planning Board, refer to the Planning Board, the following voter petition, zoning amendment received for the May 6th, 2013 annual town meeting, extensive recreation, special permit granting authority, and extensive recreation definition.
Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Harvard Road reconstruction.
We're going to spend a lot of money, but it's a road project. Big, it's a big road, it's a big road. So you've got two, two contracts to approve tonight. One is an instruction contract for 1.6 million and change to low bidder PJ Albert. The engineer's estimate was 2.1 million for this project, soup to nuts. And we had a couple of bids came in, in the, you know, the vicinity of 1.6, so we're, we're pleased with, with that. Also, we're looking to execute a contract for $95,000 with, with our engineering firm, Green International, for resident engineer and construction administration services for this project so that we can make sure it gets done properly.
This can all fit within the budget for the roadway improvement plan that the town started several years ago. We did award the design work for this road last year. We're also working on new estate and the show the road. We're doing the design space for that, and we'll be looking to hopefully award some of those contracts next this full year. But this is the next one in the plan. It is, again, within the, the budget appropriation that we had targeted. We will be tapping into the borrowing authorization that was granted at the fall special town meeting for a portion of this. But again, it's, it's within the plan, it's short-term borrowing, it's not anticipated that this will be long-term borrowing. We'll be paying it off before we permanently place it, so we're pretty pleased that it's working.
Is all the water, is that water actually up there?
About a third of the way.
Are they going to run it the rest of the way or no?
They don't have any money to do that and-
Are they going to replace what's there or, you know, maintenance or anything that's underneath there?
This is just roadway.
Just roadway and-
Oh, no, it's a good question, because I was thinking the same thing. It's roadway, but does the water department want to go in there before they do?
Yeah, it's kind of the-
No, well, no, I mean, we've coordinated our list of the 10-year, you know, roadway improvement with the water department, and frankly, they don't, they're not doing any work on those roads. They're not setting aside money on those roads. We were able to get them to do the work on Goldsmith for the water when we had that $3 million project.
It's a much older meaning.
But these other ones, and we have our, our rule is, is it five years? After we, after we, so the water department won't be doing any work on, on, on this road or any one, any other utility work would be done, won't be done on this road for a five-year period after it's completed. That's our policy on, you know, we're not going to reconstruct it, put it in a new road, and then dig it up.
And we did run this by, but the water department has still been known that this was the plan.
Jim, tight bid, huh? $1,800?
Yeah.
Between the two, that's nice. And is this full-time? Do they do full-time engineering? Does Green do full-time?
Yes.
And how did they do on the last one when they did the Harvard Road and Brew Street? Did they use up their full budget on that, do you recall?
For the engineer?
Yeah, for the, for the construction oversight of the resident here.
I think it was pretty close because the contract kind of ran over a little.
And that, it was split too, right? It was between two seasons?
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah.
That's part of the reason.
Okay. And-
So this is a not to exceed for the 180 days of the-
The 180 days. And this, Albert, they did the other one? They did Brew Street and with them?
Any other questions, Board of Members?
Next one more, so we took the million dollars early out of the plan to pay for the design or pay for the construction of this? We did borrowing authorization from this-
The borrowing authorization was authorized in the fall town.
Right.
We have not accessed it to this point.
Right.
So we, we will be using it to afford this particular road. But we will, we anticipate that we won't need to permanently place it, and by 2015, 2016, we'll just pay the bounty.
Because the borrowing was because we wanted to get this work done, so we're borrowing against the roadway improvement plan?
The borrowing was just for cash flow. We're not borrowing against anything other than the, the town's good credit.
Yeah.
It's a straight borrowing.
Yeah.
But it's used just for cash flow because we have three big roadway projects that we're in the middle of, and then we have smaller ones going in the outward years.
Right, so at some point, we're not going to be able to do the work according to schedule? We're going to have to place some of it?
No.
Okay, all right. I'll get it with you and then do clarify, because I know I had it, my head around it and-
It's, it's strictly for cash flow.
Okay, thank you.
Look for some motions here, maybe a couple.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to award to and authorize execution of a contract for roadway reconstruction of Harvard Road with PJ Albert of Pittsburgh, Mass at a low bid price of $1,646,846. Hold on, sorry. $1,646,846 with the execution of said contract, subject to receipt of performance of payment bonds and certificates of insurance.
Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to award a contract for resident engineer and construction administration services for the Harvard Road reconstruction project to Green International affiliates of Westwood, Mass in an amount not to exceed $95,450.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, we've got a vacancy review.
This is a vacancy review for my department. It is a, a shared position. Our current payroll and finance coordinator, Marlene Kenny, has requested a reduction in our hours from the normal- in our hours from the normal forty that she's budgeted to twenty-eight a week for some personal reasons. Marlene, her position is shared between the treasurer's office and my office, and she does a very, a very good job. She's consistent, she's dedicated to the department, you know, she has requested this, this reduction in our hours for, for a good reason. She still wants to, to work with us, and we really would like to keep her on in the department, doing the, the high-level function stuff that she does with us for payroll. So what we did is we sat down as a department and looked at the, the job duties that Marlene does, and how could we look at that in a different way? What we did is we carved out some of the, the lower administrative functions that she did, and looked at crafting just an administrative assistance position for the department at a lower grade, at a lower rate of pay. So in doing that, what we would be able to do was actually provide some additional cross training within the department, get the duties done that we need to have done, be able to retain Marlene in the function that she's doing, all within the same budget. So for us, I think it was a good way to look at it a little bit, I don't want to say outside the box, because we are the box, but, you know, to try and look at it in a different way, to get everything done, and, and again, I think being able to provide some cross-training within the department and, and some extra coverage in the same dollars is a benefit. So we drafted a new job description, the description was approved by the personnel board, Marlene is, is happy with the reallocation in the hours. If the, if the position did remain unfilled, the duties that, that she would be unable to fulfill would have to be done by somebody, and it would be, you know, certainly that things would be suffering in the short term, as far as getting things done with the senior work program, the park and rec employees that come on seasonally, there's a lot of volume that goes through that payroll, and that needs to be done in a timely manner just because of statutory requirements, so...
Can some of this work be filled with volunteer work, with the volunteer hours and that?
We have a lot of volunteers that we use in our department, and we already have some in payroll and some in, in the accounting office, but the volunteer hours is only like, you know, forty-five, fifty hours that they can work, and this requires some training throughout the year because it's seasonal.
Right.
So you really need an individual, yeah, that, that becomes trained to do those cyclical duties. But we did look at that.
Board members, any questions?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the Assistant Town Administrator for Budget, our Finance and Budgets request under staffing vacancy review policy to fill at our time sixteen-hour-per-week non-benefited position of Administrative Assistant for Human Resources, grade six.
Second.
Move and second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. We got consent agenda, we've got our meeting, next meeting is April eighth.
Next regular meeting is April eighth, we will post the special meetings this Thursday night.
Oh, that's right. I need to have a quorum. I'll, I'll be there for that meeting, so if we get a couple more people, I know you won't be there.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, it's just, it's a two-night thing.
All right, is, does anyone know if Jim's going to be back?
I don't know.
I don't know. All right. All right, well, let's see what we can do to get through people at that meeting. I know we've got our regular meeting on the eighth, and the next meeting is on the twenty, twenty-fifth, April?
Eight plus twenty-two?
Eight plus fourteen, so twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, April twenty-second. All right. I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from March eighteenth. That's the one we got. Still moved? Okay, second it? Anyone?
Second.
All those in favor approving the meeting minutes from March fifteenth? Am I saying aye?
Aye.
Robbleville still say aye? I really am. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to go into executive session for litigation strategy, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn our, our meeting and not convene...
Well, it's to enter, enter into executive session and not reconvene in open session.
Thank you.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Thirty A, subsections twenty-one, section twenty-one, subsection A, clause three, to convene in an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, since an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigation position of the board, and not to convene in open session thereafter.
As a roll call, move McCurdy?
Aye.
Chantey?
Aye.
Do you say?
Aye.
Mr. Max?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.